I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is six oh two, I'm sorry, five oh two P M. Can I get roll call please?
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thaddeus Ael de la Olla.
Present.
Councilmember Esteban Rosales. Councilmember Lisette Servin. Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Mary Nieves Raydell. Vice Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number two A, Part Two Videocounter presentation by Parliamentary Timothée Nguyen of Perfect Rules Inc. on Robert's Rules of Order. For council meetings as modified by the Arizona Open Meeting Law and the San Luis City Code. Item continued from the work session held on June fourth twenty twenty-five. Parliamentary Timothée Nguyen.
We cannot hear you, Mr. Tim.
You're muted.
We still cannot hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, proceed.
Okay, there was a, there was a pop up window. Apparently I had a click before it was being heard. Thank you for having me back. Very happy to be here. We, this is the second part. I started earlier as you are well aware. So I'm, I'm to, to the share of this screen now.
We did a trial.
We did a trial run and it worked. So getting a little work again.
See, okay.
Steve, okay. Okay, can everyone see my screen now that says Robert's Rules of Order, the basics?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so.
As we, as we go through this, please keep in mind that what we're covering here is Robert's Rules of Order essentially. However, there are some instances where your organization will have its own specific hours. And I like when that really comes into play if it does come into play. And as we go through, please feel free to ask questions as we go along. We don't have a natural stopping point where I would ask the very individual question before we move on to a new subject. Please feel free to interrupt me if you need to give clarification or if you'd like to ask a question. I'm going to take offense to that. Actually, I appreciate it because it allows me to not even get a drink of water. So that's always very helpful. But as we start here, there were some questions. It was via email that, that were thought to be of particular interest to the council. So I will cover those first as we go through.
Okay, the first question.
Okay, the first question is, can we point of order interrupt a member?
So let's take a look.
So let's take a look at what Robert's Rules of Order has to say about Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order says a point of order is in order when another has a point. Even interrupting a person speaking or reading report if the point generally requires attention at such a time. Now, because almost all points of order must be timely, meaning they must be made after the point rules or their rules are being breached. Then they are, they do generally require attention at that time. So if it is about a point of order. Most of the time it is going to be taken up right at that time. So yes, a member should not hesitate to raise that point of order. When they see a violation of the rules, if they feel like the violation is at the level where it needs to be brought to the attention of the chair or the attention of the assembly. And simply because someone else has a point or because someone is speaking at that time, that member, that member is being able to raise that point of order. So you certainly be mindful that you do have that, that right to raise that point of order.
Even if not.
Even if someone else is.
So you do not have.
So you do not have to be recognized to, to say a point. And so now let's go on to our next related question. And this is how should the chair handle points of order? So a brief rundown of a point of order in a meeting, we tap here. A member simply says.
Now you'll notice that the member says point of order and I put a little exclamation point behind it because that's all you need to do as a member in a meeting. When you think there's a violation of the rules happening right then is just say point of order. Like I said, you don't have to be recognized. You don't have to wait for a gap in, in the conversation. You can simply say point of order at that time. And to be clear, you're not asking or requesting a point of order. It is your right to make a point of order. So you're making that just like any other.
You have the right to make that.
So you make a point of order. Now, the presiding officer then says the member will state the point. So what really happens when you say point of order is everything, the chair has to make sure everything stops. Because this is so important. It is timely and it is a member pointing out a violation. So you have to stop everything. And the chair addresses that member, says the member will state the point. Because now all we can consider is what that member now has to say in regard to that point of order. So the member will then state the point of order. For example, the member may say, Madam Chairman, a member may not speak against another member in debate, pointing out that that was actually happening. So the member makes that point of order. The member may not speak against another member in debate. Now, when that member states the point of order in this way, the chair has a duty. The next thing that has to happen is the chair has to make a ruling on that point. And there are two ways the chair can either well taken or not well taken. So if the chair is well taken, then that means the chair, that means that that first point of order for the rules are being violated. And then the chair sees to it that that violation of the rules stops. So if the chair says, that, you know, that it chooses to go down the route of well taken. Then the chair would simply say the point is well taken. The members are reminded to refrain from speaking against other members. And then the chair ensures that that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I have a question.
So. We have a question. Councilmember Cabrera.
What happens if the chair is the one that is speaking about another member? Can a point of order be made against the chair?
Yes. Yes. So and, and it's, it's not that the member who's making the point of order is saying or insinuating anything. If the chair is simply pointing out that the rules of the assembly are being violated. And so it is the chair who happens to be in violation of the rules or the, the member who's, the chair is in violation of the rules at that time. It doesn't change. Just like with any other member. So a member should maintain to make that point of order if it's.
A member who's been.
A member who's been on the council for one day or a long standing member on the council. It's the chair or vice chair, whoever might be.
That member has that.
Member has that right to state the point of order. Then the chair should ask them to state them. Where we are in point, we need to address that. And sometimes when the point of order is made, the chair can simply explain the, the rule where it's. Whether it's about the chair or not the chair or not the chair might explain something where the, the member will say, okay, now I understand the rules aren't being broken. But I think my point of order, thank you for that. Or, or the, the chair might have accidentally gone out of bounds and not been.
It might be great.
And say, yeah, the, the point is well taken. The chair is out of bounds and will, you know, make sure that those are moved forward or whatever. But, but then, but then a big question.
What if the chair?
The chair.
Not well taken.
Not well taken. Or if another member for any reason doesn't agree with the rule of the chair. What option? And then we begin to the appeal. And the appeal is taken up right. So let's take a look at what the appeal is.
So let's say.
So let's say the member makes the point of order.
Against each other.
Debate and then the member doing that, the point of order should be put to stop.
And then the chair.
And then the chair says, you know, the, the point of order is not, the point of order is not.
Perfectly within. Within our right.
Within our rights.
So if the chair makes.
So if the chair makes that.
Then a member can.
Then a member can simply say, I appeal from the decision of the chair. Even mine is supposed to be done right at that time. They won't let time go on.
To drag.
So this is why it happened to the right way. And I'm not going to worry it requires a second.
So if another member.
So if another member steps that avail, then the question. The question that was before us.
Are the rules being broken?
That's taken out of the chair and placed before the assembly to decide. So the chair would then. The chair would then say your decision, the chair is appealed from.
And this.
And this, and appeal is usually debated and requires a majority of the chair to turn the chair.
So as soon as the chair hears an appeal, receives that second, the chair has nothing more to do with it except place it before the assembly to decide. Now the chair no longer decides except for this to be the assembly to decide. And really the principle here is the assembly is always is in charge of it. Always in charge of whether, whether the rule is being violated or decided or what. It's always what the assembly itself does, meaning all of the members collectively by their vote, really after debate, they're always in charge of that. However, to expedite this process in a meeting, they authorize the chair to initially make these rules. And that really speeds things because a lot of times the chair rules in a way that the members agree with. So it just saves time. The chair just makes the ruling on it. But if the chair makes a ruling that a member doesn't agree with, they have the right to. To appeal from that decision requires a second. And then the assembly, which was always in control anyway, now gets to exercise its right to debate and to vote. Whether or not they think what is happening in that meeting is actually violating. And so once the, the appeal has been made, the chair says, the question is, shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the commission? So it's always worded in this way that, you know, would you, do you agree with the chair, you know, with the chair's decision? But you're not voting for the chair or against the chair. Simply the decision in this particular case, shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the commission? Or the chair also says, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? Either one is acceptable. So Robert's Rules of Order goes on to say, a majority vote or a tie vote sustains the decision of the chair on the principle that the chair's decision stands until reversed by a majority. So if, if you have a majority in the negative, then that undoes the, the decision of the chair. And so it goes from well taken to not well taken. It finds person who thinks what point was and what point wasn't. Now, just as, if you ever see a screen like this, it says Robert's Rules of Order on the top and has text in the middle in gray and then on the bottom, you'll see a little orange or red bar going across there. That says R O S, well conditioned, current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. And the numbers that follow that tell you which section in which paragraph in Robert's Rules of Order you will find this information. Just so that you know where this is. Okay, Robert's Rules of Order continues by saying, if the presiding officer is a member of the assembly, he can vote to create a tie and thus sustain his decision. So the presiding officer, even though it's an appeal from his original decision, the presiding officer maintains that right as a member of the assembly to vote just like anyone else. All right. Any questions on that before we move to the next topic?
Any questions? Proceed, please.
So I have a question.
So our next question is, can the chair recess?
And so this, this is a very interesting question, one that, that comes up a lot. And apparently it's a pretty frequent thing that, that chairs might do from time to time. That and also adjourning the meeting. That's another question. Can the chair adjourn the meeting? So let's look at recess. Robert's Rules of Order says, the privileged motion to recess requires a majority vote. So it must be a vote of the assembly that authorizes this recess because we are stopping the meeting and that a meeting belongs to the assembly. Those members that are gathered there. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be in a, a vote. It could be by unanimous consent. But at the minimum, the chair would say, if there is no objection, the meeting will recess for fifteen minutes. Is there any objection? So we don't have to necessarily take an official vote, but we have to get the consent, the clear consent from the assembly to recess. So the chair does not have the authority to simply declare a recess or to declare the meeting adjourned unless either a time has already been selected by the assembly? When we will recess or adjourn or at that time the assembly decides.
I, I have a question. Yes. So what if the chair calls recess, gets up and leaves and what do, what do us as council do then?
Yeah. And so that, that's an interesting question and, and one that arises from different situations. Sometimes there's meetings that are going along just fine and the chair says, okay, this would be a good time to recess. We'll recess for fifteen minutes. And no one, no one really disagrees with this. You know, they're like, okay, that's fine. So that's a situation where it's very, very informal, but no one really objects to it. So it's sort of okay, you know, if you follow what I'm saying. It's like, okay, no one objected. But if the chair just does it and the other members don't want to recess or any member doesn't want to recess. Then, you know, it's not an official recess. What should happen there? And sometimes this will happen in, in tense moments or intense meetings. And I always, you know, let people know that if you're in a meeting like that, it's not recessed just because the chair says it is.
So I would advise members to raise the point of order right there or at least, you know, let other members know that the, the, the meeting doesn't recess just because the chair says it's recessed. It has to be the assembly. So I would raise a point of order, say, you know, point of order, Mr. Chairman, the chair does not have the authority to declare a recess. Or to recess the meeting of his own authority, but there must be a, a motion by a member and there must be, you know, a, a vote to recess or at least unanimous consent. So that's one option. And how, how you respond to the chairs doing that will depend on what the situation is, you know. Do, does everybody generally feel like, yeah, okay, recess is fine at this time? But any, anyway, if you have a, a chair who, you know, is in the habit of doing this or thinks that this is within the chair's authority, sometimes just a, a little conversation about that, you know, a little polite conversation maybe can, can settle that. But if it really comes to it in a meeting, I would simply raise a point of order and say, you know, that the, the chair does not have that authority to recess the meeting. But only the assembly can decide when it will pause and when it will stop its business. Any, any further questions on that one before?
The Councilmember Rosales asked, what if the chair leaves from the room and everyone wants to continue? Correct? That's, that's the question.
Okay, what? Okay, so you're saying what if, what if the chair leaves the room? So first off, if the chair says, if I'm understanding the question very, if the chair says, okay, the meeting's recessed, that's a separate issue. It's like, no, the meeting's not recessed just because the chair says. But then if the chair walks off and sometimes chairs will say, okay, the meeting's adjourned and leave. And I always advise members in this situation, that doesn't make it so just because the chair said so. So it's not a recessed meeting. And so you would do whatever you would do normally when that individual left. Do you still have a quorum? If so, you can still conduct business. Do you have someone there who is already in succession to preside in the absence of your, your, your permanent presiding officer? Your normal presiding officer? If so, like if you have a president, a vice president, chairman and a vice chairman, then the vice chair would take over the meeting just the same as if the recent, as if the chair had said, you know, I, I need to take a, a personal break here. I can't continue or, you know, I'm feeling lightheaded or feeling like I have to, you know, I'm going to go into a coughing fit or whatever. Just excuse me for, you know, a few minutes, a few moments. That doesn't end the meeting. What would happen is the, the chair would then pass over to the next in line to preside over that meeting. And the meeting would continue with its business. Now, it's really up to the assembly what they want to do. If, if the assembly sees the chair leave and says, oh, well, you know, we can, we can take a fifteen minute, you know, recess to allow the chair to come back, that's fine. But it's completely up to the members in that assembly, not the chair alone, acting alone. Does that answer the question?
Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Servin.
Yes, I do kind of like answer my question already, but my, when that happens, can one of us say point of order and then immediately turn into the vice mayor and ask him or her to take over the meeting? Is that something that could be?
Yeah.
That we could do?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, if the chair, if the chair leaves or, or leaves the chair, even says, I'm not chairing anymore, then it moves on to the, to the vice chair. And if that's clearly the situation, then the vice chair would be the one in charge of, you know, presiding over the meeting at that time. It would be the presiding officer. And, and that's fine in a meeting. You know, it really shouldn't slow the meeting down as long as we understand, okay, someone else is in the chair now. And if you have a point of order about the recess, that would, that could be taken up by the, the vice chair at that time. Who would say the, the point of order is well taken. The, the meeting is not in recess unless the members vote to take a recess and that has happened. So the, the current item of business is this and you just continue on with your business like that. You know, it really depends on that, that situation, what the assembly would want to do. But the important thing that, that I hope the members, you know, get a, take away from this is that it is always up to the assembly, not up to, to one individual to recess or to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. And this is a follow up question. I'm just thinking of a scenario, if the situation escalates and let's say the chair leaves the room and the vice is taking over the meeting and pretty, we're running the meeting and then all of a sudden the chair decides to come back and take over the meeting. What would be the situation or the step to follow after that if we're running the meeting, conducting the meeting, the vice is taking care of it, but the vice is taking care of the meeting, but the chair returns?
Right. So first, in this first scenario, we will assume that there is no, there, there is no indecorum on, on the part of the, the chair or anyone else in this situation. When we have the chair leave and the vice chair takes over, when the chair returns, the normal chair, the chair then takes the meeting back, so to speak. Has that duty of presiding. Normally that transition happens at a natural breaking point, not like in, in the middle of something. But it could happen at, at any point because when the chair returns, the chair should be presiding, but it is considered perfectly acceptable and allowable. All the item of business is, that is being, you know, transacted at that time to finish up if the, if the chair's been absent long enough that the chair might not be up to speed on what's actually happening in the meeting. But yeah, when that chair returns, the, the proper process is for the chair to, the, the permanent presi, the, the chairman, let's say, to take that position of the chair once again from the vice chair. But this is assuming everything's going fine and, and there are no trouble. And then this would just be a handoff back to the chair. And, and there's no repercussions for the, the chair leaving temporarily and coming back. That's fine. But if we add on to that some, some hostilities or tensions or maybe, you know, indecorum by someone in the meeting, then it changes things a bit. That, that what I just said still, still holds. However, anything that might be seen by the assembly as disruptive to the meeting would have to be addressed separately. So the chair is leaving and then coming back and, and retaking the chair does not necessarily disrupt the meeting or disturb the meeting at all, just on the face of it. But if the chair is intentionally doing it to disrupt the meeting, then the, you know, that's, that's where the assembly, you know, might want to take some action. Maybe, maybe, you know, declare recess itself for fifteen minutes to, to gather itself or maybe to raise a point of order. Just to say that this chair's behavior is disrupting the meeting and is not in order. And so then we can have, you know, a ruling on that subject to appeal just so the assembly can, can get its voices heard on what's actually happening inside the meeting. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we will.
I have Councilmember Cruz.
Another question? Yeah.
More of a comment. I think we're going to have to install the point of order button because it was not respected.
Right.
So that's just a comment.
Right.
It, it's just very frustrating, but thank you for clearing up all the majority of, of the questions that we've been having so far.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, and that's part of, you know, that's part of the, the, the process too. Because in parliamentary law, we frequently say, the rules don't enforce themselves, you know, it's really up to the members. And sometimes it feels like a, a lot for a member to be like, okay, now I have to enforce the rules. But really who else is going to do it? You know, if, if the chair, you know, on, on one or two occasions or whenever is not stepping up to enforce the rules, then it falls upon the assembly to say, wait a minute, we're, we're here. Our hands and our votes count more than, you know, than just the, the elected presiding officer, whoever it might be in this particular situation. So that's why, you know, the, the more knowledgeable and more confident the members are about their rights to, to make decisions and, and make rulings and to make appeals, the more confident they are, the, the smoother the meeting can go when these situations arise. And also it sends a message to presiding officers as well that you're dealing with an assembly that understands its right and, and its rights and its role. That they understand that, that the, the chair works for the assembly, not the other way around, you know. And so that's, that's very helpful for an assembly to, and for a chair to know that, okay, if, if we go out of bounds, this group knows that it can consider this on its own and decide what is in bounds and what isn't in bounds. And then once that decision is made by vote of the assembly, the chair has to adhere to that decision. No matter how strongly the chair might disagree with the decision, the chair has a duty to follow the directive of the assembly when it comes to rulings on parliamentary matters. All right. So we will move on to our next question if there's no other questions. Okay. So our next question is, is there a provision in Robert's Rules of Order that states Robert's rules are just a guideline? Do errors affect the validity of actions taken? Okay. So I'll, I'll separate these two questions. The first question is very common. A lot of, a lot of people ask this. And a lot of times when, when people get stuck or they feel like their hands are tied by the rules, then they start leaning on this concept. Well, Robert's Rules of Order is just sort of just a guideline, you know, or it's just a roadmap. It's not actually, you know. It's not actually, you know, we don't actually have to follow it. Well, that's not the case. Robert's Rules of Order are rules, and when they're adopted by an organization, your organization has adopted Robert's Rules of Order, so they are the rules. They're, they're encoded in your governing documents. So they are just as official as any other governing document that you have. You have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, that's the procedure that has been decided upon. Now, there are obviously changes that you can make to it. You can't amend Robert's Rules of Order, but you can, you can supersede it with your own rules to, to adapt it to your style. But what I find is when people feel like they're being handcuffed by Robert's Rules of Order, it's simply that they're, number one, they're either not understanding all of their options and the way Robert's Rules is designed to help you. So that's, you know, the, one of the primary things. Another thing is, if you're trying to do something that's gonna take away rights of other members or it's gonna be a slower, less efficient way to accomplish the goals of the assembly, then you might find that Robert's Rules of Order is, you're gonna rub up against it there because Robert's Rules of Order is designed to protect, protect the rights of all the members, and it's designed to allow the assembly to operate in the smoothest, easiest way possible. So if that's your goal, then studying Robert's Rules of Order is gonna give you all the tools you need to be able to do that. So Robert's Rules of Order is not something that's in the way, and it's not merely a suggestion either. It is your rules that you have to follow because your, your governing documents say, these are the rules we're gonna follow. That's the whole purpose of Robert's Rules of Order. Now, that brings us to the second question. Do errors affect the validity of actions taken? And this is one of the saving graces in parliamentary law, and that is that you can make mistakes along the way, and if you get to the end of that process and you've made a valid decision that didn't violate anyone's rights along the way, that didn't, you know, do anything so horrendous that it would, it would rise to the highest level of a parliamentary crime, so to speak. If you, if you just make a few errors along the way, then that doesn't invalidate the action that was taken. As long as a clear decision is made by the assembly, that stands. So why is that the case and how does that actually work? Well, a lot of times we'll talk about, a point of order has to be timely. So this means that you can't break this particular rule. You know, you can't break a rule, or let's say a motion requires a second. Well, if a member makes a motion and then the chair starts to place it before the assembly to consider, and another member says, point of order, there was no second to that motion and it requires a second. Then we follow that rule and we say, oh, okay, well, the, the chair says, oh, that, thank you for catching that mistake. The, the point is well taken, there's no second. If there's no second, the motion's gonna die for lack of a second, is there a second? Okay, there's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. That's the rule's doing its job, saving the assembly the time of considering something that didn't receive a second, so not, two members don't even want it to come before the assembly. However, if we threw and we, we forgot, just accidentally forgot to get a second and then members debated and find out that they actually do like this, and then they adopt it. At the end of the day, when we come back, you know, a week later and we say, uh-oh, we never got a second on that motion. Well, that's not gonna undo the motion, that's not gonna affect the validity of the motion or the validity of the assembly's decision, just because they, they missed a few parliamentary steps along the way. So do errors affect the validity of action taken? Most of the time, no, like 99% of the time, no. But there are a few violations of the rules. If, for example, if notice is required, you have to give notice before something can be adopted, and you fail to give that notice, but then you adopt it. Well, then that would invalidate that motion, that action that was taken, because it was taken without notice being given. You know, there are, there are other, you know, examples, these, these real pillars of parliamentary law that cannot be violated. But outside of that, most of the things that organizations do when they, when they get a few things wrong here and there, it's not gonna affect the outcome, because the, the decision of the assembly was clear. We know what they decided, and so the decision stands. All right, any questions on that before we move forward? And it highlights another point why points of order should be raised right away, because that's the only time that you can really correct that mistake. Okay, so now we're gonna look.
There's a question.
Yes.
Consumer survey?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, on what you just stated on the errors that don't affect the validity. On the other slides, you provided the reference from the Robert's Rule Book. Is it, where can we find that? You don't have it, or is it something that is not in the book?
Yes, so section, section 23 in Robert's Rules of Order, that's section 23, covers points of order. And so it will, it will give you a list of all of the rules about point of order, but also within that section, and it's a pretty small section. So within that section 23, it will list out what the, the situations are where a point of order does not have to be timely, meaning that it's in order at any time while that, while that breach continues. Those are called continuing breaches. It's not a very inventive title, but that's the name of it in parliamentary law. So if it is identified as a continuing breach, then a point of order can be raised at any time. And if the point is well taken, then the, the action that was taken in, in connection with the, the point of order is null and void. So we can say, okay, that, that is a continuing breach. As a parliamentarian, when somebody says, oh, that's a continuing breach, or, you know, insinuates that in some way, what we have to do is identify, is it one of those five things listed in Robert's Rules of Order as a continuing breach? If it falls into one or more of those categories, then you can make a point of order at any time. But if it does not fall into one of those categories, then your point of order has to be timely. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we're gonna look at ending debate. So we're gonna start with a question here. When can the chair end debate? We have A, when everyone has had an opportunity to speak, B, when no new points are being raised, C, whenever he chooses, or D, never. So just think about what your answer would be here, and when can the chair end debate? So our answer on this one is going to be D, never. So what do we mean by this? A lot like when we were talking about recess or adjourn, the chair cannot on his own just say, okay, that's enough debate, we've gone on long enough, debate is over. But now, if there is a limit of debate that's already been adopted, it's either in the rules or it was adopted by the assembly. The assembly might say, you know, debate on this, motion will be limited to 20 minutes. Well, that's the assembly deciding that. And then the chair has the duty to enforce that. So when 20 minutes are up, the chair would declare that debate has ended. But it's, it's not that the chair decides on his own. This, once again, would have to be a decision of the assembly, or it would have to be written in the rules somewhere. But just on his own, the chair can never say, okay, debate, I've heard enough, the motion's gonna be put to a vote now, no more debate. Now, that's different than if debate naturally stops. So we'll talk about that in a moment. But what we're talking about here is when members, one or more members, still want to debate, but the chair says, no, no, that's, that's it, we've heard enough, or I'm not hearing anything new, so we're just getting caught in the weeds here, so we're gonna go ahead and vote. Chair does not have that authority to do that, always keep that in mind. Okay, so our next question, what should the chair do when no member responds to his call for debate? So this is why, what we're talking, was talking about just a moment ago, where the chair, you know, will say, the last member spoke in favor, would any member like to speak against? Would any member like to speak in favor again? Is there any further debate? So what should the chair do when no one, no one is responding to that call for debate? A, ask for a motion to close debate, that would allow the assembly to decide. B, say if there's no objection, debate will be closed. Once again, that allows the assembly to decide. Or C, announce that debate is now closed. Or would it be D, put the question on the pending motion to a vote? So think about that, what would your answer be when debate ends naturally? And our answer here is D. The chair should simply put the question on the pending motion to a vote, because we have the motion placed before the assembly, members then debate it. The next parliamentary step after debate is the motion is put to a vote. So once debate ends, the chair doesn't need approval from the assembly to take that next step. That is the natural next step in the rules, it's put to a vote. Because no member is seeking the floor to speak in debate, we know that the assembly is ready to move to a vote. So the, the chair simply moves on to the vote. So some chairs, you know, will say, is there a motion to, you know, put this to a vote? Or is there a motion to end debate or something like that? Simply not necessary when debate has already ended, the chair simply moves to the next step. Okay, now let's look at another question. Is a motion to limit or end debate debatable? So is it itself debatable? If we have a motion, a motion oftentimes will be in order to limit debate on something or even to end debate on something. But is that motion to end or limit debate itself debatable? Our question, our answer to this question is no, because it would defeat the purpose of the motion. If somebody was like, okay, we've had enough talking, let's go to a vote. And somebody says, okay, well, now let's talk about whether or not we want to stop talking or not. That's, the chair simply, when there's a motion to limit debate and it receives a second, the chair simply puts it to a vote so we can decide if the assembly at that time wants to end debate, debate on this particular motion and go directly to a vote. All right. One more, and then we'll look for some questions if there are any. What vote is required to limit or end debate? Would it be a one-third vote, a majority vote, a two-thirds vote, or the same vote as the motion to which it applies? So if we want to limit debate, member wants to limit debate, makes that motion and seconded, placed before the assembly immediately without debate. What vote is required to actually enact a limit or to end debate? And that would be a two-thirds vote. Because here, we're taking away a right of members. And so in parliamentary law, we have to balance the rights of the individual member to debate and the right of the assembly to not be held by a smaller group to listen to debate when a, a larger group is ready to vote. So parliamentary law here uses a two-thirds vote, meaning that twice as many have to want to end debate to be able to take that right to debate, right of debate away from that one-third. So a two-thirds vote is required. So are there any questions on anything we've covered here about debate, debate before we move on? All right. So now we're gonna get into a related concept here, which is called previous question in parliamentary law. That's the official name, the formal name. Oftentimes, it's referred to as calling the question. And this is something that arises when a member in a meeting, you know, might stand up and say, I call the question. And there is a concept going around that if someone says, I call the question, then there's no more debate, debate ends and we go to a vote. But that is not the process, even though that happens a lot in meetings incorrectly. Robert's Rules of Order says, the previous question is a motion used to bring the assembly to an immediate vote on one or more pending questions. So there's some specific characteristics about previous question, which most of the time is in order and can be used. However, we have to adhere to these principles that you'll see on the screen here. Number one, it can be made by any member who has the floor. So you can't simply call out previous question. It has to be, in other words, it has to be your turn to speak before you can move the previous question or make a motion to end debate. Number two, it requires a second. So if it doesn't receive a second, it just simply dies and debate continues. Number three, it's not debatable. And number four, it requires a two-thirds vote for adoption, like we talked about before. It requires twice as many members to shut down the, the other members from their right to vote. Okay, so here's what previous question would look like in a meeting. A member would say, I move the previous question, another member seconded it. The chair then says, the previous question is moved and seconded. Those in favor of ordering the previous question, raise your hand, hands down. Those opposed, raise your hands, hands down. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the previous question is ordered. So you see how quickly it can be done. And keep in mind, it's not debatable and it requires a two-thirds vote. Now, that is the formal way of doing it. A less formal way, which is also perfectly acceptable, would be a member might say, I move to end debate. Or might say, you know, I move to vote now, or even say, can we vote now? And that requires a second as well. And it has the same characteristics, no matter how it's moved. So it would be not debatable and still requires a two-thirds vote. All right, now I want to cover two very important rights and restrictions for the maker of a motion. If you're the one who made the motion, whatever that motion is, you have the right to speak first in debate. So the chair, when a member makes a motion, if it's seconded and the chair places it before the assembly, the chair should look to the maker of the motion to speak first in debate. If the maker of the motion doesn't wish to speak at that time, the maker doesn't lose his right to speak, but simply decides not to speak first on the motion, but does have that right to speak first. And also, the maker cannot speak against his own motion. If you make a motion, you cannot speak against it in debate. So the principle here is that if you're not in favor of something, if you're opposed to something, don't make that motion, wait for someone else to make it and then speak against it. But perhaps no one else is in favor of it either, so no one will make it. So it's best not to make a motion, simply to speak against it and vote against it. Now, another question that we get a lot with this is, what happens if it's amended during debate into a different form, then can you speak against it? Well, if it's amended to mean the opposite, which is a legitimate amendment. If you're, if you're made a motion to commend someone and then a motion is made to censure them instead, you bring disciplinary action against them, yes, that's a different motion than the one you made. It wouldn't make any sense for you to, to now be restricted where you can't speak against a motion that's, that's the exact polar opposite of the motion that you made. Another question we get here is, if you second a motion, can you speak against it? And yes, you can, there's no restrictions on seconding a motion. It simply means that you, you support the motions coming forward to be, you're in favor of it coming forward to be considered, not that you're actually in favor of it when you second it. Are there any questions on that before we move forward?
Proceed, please.
All right, okay, so now we're gonna look at voting. So an important question here, because it comes up so much in parliamentary law, is what does majority mean? So I'm gonna put some choices on the screen here. A, 51%, B, half plus one, C, more than half, or D, any of the above. So what, what would your thoughts be here? There are answers that we get are usually pretty split along these, and any of the above comes off usually as the winner. But the actual answer here is more than half. So that's important to remember, those three words in parliamentary law. Majority means more than half, just those three words and nothing else. So the question arises, why isn't it the others that, that we hear so often, 51% or half plus one? Well, let's take a look at Robert's Rules of Order, what Robert's Rules of Order says, and then we will look at the differences between those terms. Robert's Rules of Order says, the word majority means more than half. And when the term majority vote is used without qualification, as in the case of the basic requirement, it means more than half of the votes cast by persons entitled to vote, excluding blanks or abstentions at a regular or properly called meeting. Okay, so more than half is what we want to take out of that entire big paragraph there, more than half. Okay, so majority versus half plus one, let's take a look at why these aren't the same thing. So remember, majority equals more than half. So what is more than half? We're using majority, we're using that, that definition, more than half. So what is more than half of five, let's say? Well, first, we have to figure out what half of five is. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it's 2.5. So if half of five is 2.5, then more than half of five would be anything over 2.5. That's simply what it is, anything over 2.5. Okay, so would three be a majority of five, if majority means more than half? Yes, it would, because that's anything over 2.5. So would three votes adopt the motion if five votes were cast and it required a majority to adopt? And our answer would be yes. Now, let's look at half plus one. We'll look at the same example, what is half plus one of five? Well, we have to start with half of five, which is 2.5. Plus one would give us 3.5. So would three be half plus one of five? And our answer is no, it does not rise to that level of 3.5. And then, would three votes adopt the motion if five members cast votes and it required half plus one to adopt? In that case, no, it wouldn't. So you see, we're actually, by how we define majority vote, we're actually changing the vote requirement, where it would be lost if it's half plus one, but it would be adopted if it's a majority vote. So the golden standard in parliamentary law, of course, is the majority vote, meaning more than half. Meaning you have more in favor than opposed. As long as you have more in favor than opposed, then that motion by majority vote is adopted. If we get into different definitions like half plus one, trying to simplify it, then what happens is we actually lose the meaning and we, we don't get the same vote requirement. Okay, so just keep in mind that majority does not mean half plus one. It does not mean 51%, it means more than half, just those three words. Any questions on that before we move on to our next example? All right, we're going to move on. And now, here's a, here's a question related to voting. What happens if there's a tie on a motion requiring a majority vote? So three to three, or two to two, or 99 to 99, if we have a tie, what happens in this case? A, the motion is lost, B, the motion is adopted, C, the vote must be taken again, or D, the chair A, the motion is lost, B, the motion is adopted, C, the vote must be taken again, or D, the chair decides. What happens in this case? So in this case, the motion is lost. If there's a tie on a vote requiring a majority vote, uh the motion is lost. So that's simply because majority means more than half, and if it's tied, it did not receive more than half. So it did not reach that majority vote threshold. So something uh seven to seven vote is lost just the same as a zero to fourteen vote. Okay, now we're gonna look at a two thirds vote, two thirds vote, very important, as we've seen here in in some of these slides. In parliamentary law, it's a very important concept, so it's important to uh to understand it fully. So there must be two thirds in the affirmative with the two thirds vote, that means twice as many in favor as opposed. So the easiest way to figure where a two thirds vote, the outcome. Uh let's say we have twenty in favor and eight opposed, the easiest way to figure it is to look at the opposed first. So we'll take this eight and simply double it. So if we double eight, we get sixteen, and then we compare sixteen to twenty. And we can see that this motion is adopted, because when we're looking at sixteen, we see that uh yeah, twenty would adopt this motion. Okay, so let's use that same uh concept here, and if we look at a hundred and fifteen in favor and eighty opposed, we can do the same thing. If we double eighty, we get one sixty. And we see that one fifteen falls well short of one sixty, so we know this motion is lost. Now let's take a look at uh another example. What if we have one in favor and zero opposed, what do we do now? Do we double the zeros and go from there, what happens? So just think to yourself, is this motion adopted or lost? So the actual answer on this one is that it's adopted. Why is it adopted by a two thirds vote? Well, it's adopted because it's actually unanimous vote. No matter how many members were present, we're just counting the votes and there was one vote in favor and none opposed. So when we have no opposition and at least one vote in favor, that's adopted. Because that's adopted by a majority vote, is adopted by a two thirds vote, a three fourths vote. It's adopted by a hundred percent vote, because it's completely unanimous. So uh that uh would be adopted motion also. Now let's look at an example that trips up a lot of people. Uh we have forty in favor and twenty opposed, is this motion adopted or lost? What would your thought be here? So we're gonna look at twenty and we're gonna double it and we're gonna get forty. So we have forty and forty, and this is adopted. And then sometimes people will say, well, how can it be adopted when it's a tie? But it's not a tie. Remember, we just doubled twenty to get forty to see what number we need uh the in favor to be. Because remember, there has to be twice as many in favor for a two thirds vote as those opposed. It's not like majority vote where there has to be more than half. There doesn't have to be more than twice as many, there just has to be at least twice as many in favor as opposed, and then that's a two thirds vote. So this is adopted by a uh by a two thirds vote. And then one final example, uh just for fun, now that you're experts, you can look at seventeen and you can double it. And then you can know that this motion is lost, because it did not reach that level of twice as many in favor. So when you double that number, that gives you your magic number that you have to hit uh for it to be adopted. Okay, so why are we talking about a two thirds vote? Well, if you take Robert's Rules of Order, uh here's, here's a copy of it right here. And you look uh and get a copy if you don't have one, because it's a great resource. But if you look at near the back, you'll see the uh strip of gray right there, those are called the tinted pages. And they have a lot of condensed information uh right at your disposal, right there in the the back uh in those tinted pages. So you will see in there a table of rules relating to motions, and it looks like this. And you'll see that it starts off with number one, and then it goes down in in numeric sequence from there. Now, the first one is the main motion uh or the main question. And that's um whatever you're gonna bring up first, whatever you you're, when you're transacting business, if that's a resolution, whatever it is, that's known as the main motion. So it gives all the standard descriptive characteristics of a main motion across that line. But then you'll notice under the main motion, we have other uh motions there, and they're all in alphabetical order. So the main motion is number one, it's not in alphabetical order, but everything else under it is in alphabetical order. So if you wanted to look up the the motion to adjourn, you're gonna find it right there in the A's. If you wanted to look up the motion to recess, you're gonna find it in the R's. So it's a very good, simple resource to find that motion. And what what types of things you're gonna find out about it? Well, if we look over here, vote requirement is on every one of these uh is a column on every one of these entries. And so we're gonna see here in this vote requirement, that majority vote is very common, very common. We're gonna see majority vote all throughout here, and it's comforting to flip to that page and know what vote is required for that particular motion. But if we flip into this table a few more, get into the thirties here, uh we see that there are other types of votes that are quite common too, like a two thirds vote. Here we have two thirds vote, and then here we have a vote that is three different votes all rolled into one. And so I want to just take a brief moment to explain that. When you see an entry like this that says, majority vote with notice or two thirds vote or uh majority of entire membership. Then you have three different vote requirements here and any one of them will do. So what this means is that if notice has been given of this particular action to be taken, then it only requires a majority vote. So you simply say, was notice given? Yes, well, then it's a majority vote. But if no notice was given on it, then it requires a two thirds vote. But as an alternative, you can also have a majority of the entire membership. So what is that, what does that mean and how does that differ from a majority vote? Well, majority of the entire membership is really uh, we can really see the difference with if we have a thousand members, a thousand member organization and only. You know, two hundred show up at the meeting or something. They're never gonna get a majority of the entire membership to agree on something, because a majority of the entire membership is not gonna show up at the meeting. But when you have a small board like yours, uh then a majority of the entire membership is a very, you know, powerful vote requirement when it's applicable. Because uh you can do things that you normally could only do with a two thirds vote, but with a majority of the entire membership. Which, for all intents and purposes, if all your members are in attendance, uh it's gonna be a practically the same as a majority vote. So that only is gonna apply, though, when you flip to the tenant pages and you find one that can be adopted by a majority of the entire membership. Otherwise, it's gonna be a majority or two thirds or a majority with um notice. And now you'll also see in here, very interesting, on some motions, it says, demand of single member. And so if it's a demand of a single member, it's not even put to a vote. If a single member makes that motion or makes that demand, then uh the the assembly is compelled to go down that course. You, that's that's empowering, certain, uh certain of these motions empower members to have that individual right to take action inside of a meeting. So it's good to to flip through here and find out what you can do as an individual member without the consent of anyone else, because it's your basic right as a member. Okay, so now, any questions on what we covered there before we dive quickly into secondary motions and then we'll wrap up? Okay, so now I'm gonna talk about secondary motions. So what we, what do we mean by secondary motions? Uh well, in parliamentary law, you may be familiar with a very important concept, and that's that we only have one item pending at a time. We only do one thing, we we work on one item, one motion. And we take it to a vote and we decide it, and then we move on to the next thing, so that we don't have a bunch of balls in the air at one time. So what are secondary motions? Well, they allow us to take certain actions and adopt certain uh motions even while another motion is pending. So let's see how that works. So we're gonna start with the main motion. Like I said, this is something that comes before the assembly as an original or or an incidental main motion that's that's coming up. As substantive business that we're gonna do. So now, when it's made and seconded, the chair places it before the assembly. And then it is the immediately pending motion. Now, there are certain things we can do with it, even though it's it's pending as a motion, other than just adopt it or or vote against it. Uh we can amend it, for example. So that's an example of a secondary motion. So a member, while the main motion is is pending, a member will um seek the floor, be recognized by the chair and then say, I move to amend. By, you know, such and such. If that's uh receives a second, the chair places the amendment before the assembly and, oh, I pushed the wrong button. So we'll go through these graphics again. So um the chair places the amendment before the assembly, and then the amendment becomes the immediately pending motion. So what does that mean? That means that only debate on the amendment is in order at this time, because it is the immediately pending motion. Wouldn't be in order to talk about the main motion at this time, only the amendment. And then let's say someone get uh seeks the floor and is recognized by the chair speaking and debate on the amendment and then says. I move to refer the main motion and the amendment to a committee, let them handle it. If that receives a second and the chair places it before the assembly, then the motion to refer to a committee becomes the immediately pending motion. We can no longer talk about the amendment or the main motion, we have to decide first, do we want to refer it to a committee or not? If not, then we can go back and and talk about the amendment, but first we have to decide this, and then someone can get up and debate. And say, now I move to postpone all of this until the next meeting, or maybe postpone it until four o'clock, whatever. Then that motion becomes the immediately pending motion, if it's seconded and placed before the assembly. And then somebody finally stands up and says, okay, I move to adjourn. If that receives a second, it becomes the immediately pending motion. So you see, we can have all of these motions pending at the same time, but there's certain rules that apply to them now, to this this tree that we've created. And that is that the vote must be taken first on the motion to adjourn, which is not debatable, so it's just gonna go to an immediate vote. If the motion to adjourn is adopted, then we go home and we don't have to worry about this until later. But if it's lost, then what happens is we drop down and postpone to a certain time, then becomes the immediately pending motion again. And so it is put to a vote, and after debate ends there and it's put to a vote, if it's adopted. Then this is postponed to the next meeting or whenever, and we don't have to worry about it anymore. But if it's lost, then what happens? We drop down to refer to a committee, and so now we have to decide, do we want to commit this? That is put to a vote after debate ends, and if it's adopted, it goes away to a committee and we don't have to worry about it. But if it's lost, then we drop down again to amend, and this is now once again our immediately pending motion. Only debate on it is in order, it's put to a vote, whether to amend the motion or not. Whether it's a, whether the vote to uh, whether the amendment is adopted or lost, doesn't matter. We're gonna drop down to the main motion, and the main motion is once again immediately pending. Either in the form that it uh originally was or in its amended form, depending on how the vote went on the amendment. But that's how we work our way back through those. Now, just very briefly, if uh you know, you want more clarity on this, you can go once again to those tenant pages. Tended page four will show you a list of motions, and this list is very powerful, because it shows the main motion on the bottom. Then it shows the subsidiary motions and the privileged motions, uh those are bracketed together. And it shows which ones are debatable, which ones are not debatable. It's like a one look at this chart and you can learn all of this information from it, even in a meeting. Uh and then we see, here's how this this hierarchy works, the main motion is on the bottom. If a motion to postpone to a certain time is pending, meaning it, members are debating it, but it hasn't been put to a vote yet, should we postpone this, should we not? Then a motion to limit or extend limits of debate would be in order, for example, because everything above that motion. Uh the pending motion, everything above it on this chart is in order. So previous question would be order, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Everything below it on this chart would not be in order. So you have to look at this hierarchy to determine which is um in order, excuse me, which is in order and which is not in order at a particular time. It's a great resource in the back of the book, if you get familiar with it, it's very helpful. Um and that covers what, everything we have for today. Is there, are there any questions on anything we covered before I I do a, before I, before I let you go?
No, there are no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, thank you for having me.
Okay, item number two B, presentation by Pierce Coleman Law Firm on elected officials duties, Mr. Justin S. Pierce.
Mike. Is your microphone on?
What's that?
Yeah, it is, it wasn't on, it is.
Okay, yeah, you can hear me, okay? While they're getting that loaded, I uh. Right here. Stopped by chili pepper on my way in. As as most of you know, I'm I'm a Yuma native, grew up, went to high school. Here, so every time I come, I gotta get my my fill of chili pepper. I ordered way too much and ate all of it. So I'm gonna do, that's why I got the Dr. Pepper to go with it.
Glad you got your fix.
Depending on when we get out of here, I might stop on my way out too. Well, thanks for, uh I I'm gonna be respectful of your time. I know that uh you guys have already had some good information presented to you. I was asked to come and do uh an overview, recap, training, discussion related to. The San Luis Code of Conduct and what I've called some related council need to know items. Um I, and I I think most of you know my my law firm, we are the general counsel, contracted city town attorneys for. Over twenty Arizona municipalities, and uh so I've seen uh codes of conduct and and all sorts of things. And in a number of different uh places, uh I did learn a couple of things from that Robert's Rules of Order presentation. I I was skeptical of one or two of the things, I was like, wait, is that right? So I chat GPT'd it back there and it was right, so um. But here, what what I wanted to share with you is your your code of conduct and and the things that we'll discuss are are very um common. In a lot of of places. I used to make fun of the older lawyers that I used to go do presentations with, because they had all these war stories and. Now I've become that lawyer that tells war stories, I'm gonna try not to tell too many, but I'm gonna share with you a couple, just as it pertains to to these items. It's probably an oversimplification for me to say this, but uh in my experience, over twenty years now. Of representing, you know, significantly, a lot of uh cities and towns. I represent a lot of private employers and employment related matters too, but um we we represent, I mean, again, for. I I have been counsel of record in in well over a hundred federal court cases just alone, federal court. Not to mention the state court cases, and I've probably defended somewhere in the range of two, three, four hundred. EEOC or ACRD charges of discrimination or other things like that, where uh different supervisors or others are alleged to have engaged in misconduct. Sometimes when it comes to cities and towns, council members get named in those things too. And um I, again, the oversimplification perhaps is if if councils. Abode by the the code of conduct to the T, a a good number of those cases probably would have never been filed in the first place. And those charges would have never been filed, because um those divisions and what what a council is intended to be as a policymaking body. Versus an administrative person or body uh is is a very helpful thing when it comes to protecting both the municipality. But as well, the individual council members too. So let's talk about a few of these things, and I think it's, let's see, is it just that, there we go. So your code of conduct has a, I put it up here, this, one of the 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 opening pages. It's really, I think, the aspirational reason for why you have a code of conduct. It's it's to help um facilitate a a functioning council and process. And key to those things are things like, for example, demonstrating kindness, consideration and courtesy. By the way, in ca- in case you're wondering like, oh, boy, here we are getting sensitivity training by Justin. This, that's not what the, well, it kind of is what it is, but I have a, I have a city that does this every single year. They just put it on the, an agenda for, I I can't remember what month, but they just do it as a matter of course. Because even though a lot of these things, you would think it's like, hey, it's important to be kind, it's like, hello, we know that. But having these reminders put up in front of us after we've had, you know, you know, however many council meetings and other things that can get very difficult. And and sensitive issues and contentious issues, it's just good to put it back on the on your mind in the forefront. You go, yeah, this is probably an important thing for us to to keep in mind as we move forward. So um being respectful of others, inspiring public confidence in in government. Uh demonstrating honesty and integrity, all of these sorts of things is really the aspirational purpose of a code of conduct. So in the San Luis Code of Conduct, you have multiple sections, and here's what they are, they're separated by this. First, there is a section that is dedicated to council conduct with one another, we'll talk some little bit about that. Then you've got a section on conduct with city staff, we'll talk separately about that. Council conduct with the public, we'll talk about that. Council conduct with other public agencies, we'll talk about that. Council conduct with other boards and commissions, we'll talk about that. Couple of these we'll 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 fly through pretty quickly, because it's, there's not a lot there. And then council conduct with the media, which is also pretty uh pretty quick. But the keys, I would say, to the code of conduct and where they, where it. But the keys, I would say, to the code of conduct and where they, where it really, where the rubber meets the road is in those first three, really. Council conduct with one another, with city staff, and with the public. Those are, those are the three big ones, I would say. So let's talk about council conduct with one another. Um, there, there's, uh, conduct in a public meeting in a setting like, like this. And, um, of course, the code of conduct requires civility and decorum. And, you know, by the way, I, I will, I, I wanna make sure I cover everything that we, that we wanna cover here. But at the end, if you, if you have questions or something, you know, I will, I will leave some time for questions and you can ask me questions, hypotheticals, whatever you wanna do. But so in the public setting, it's important to, to try to maintain that civility and decorum. That, that's a hard thing. I get it. There are issues that get discussed in a, in a, in a body like this that can sometimes create some, some feelings. And, uh, I've been involved in so many, uh, city council meetings where, where those feelings get, get worked up. And it's really important just to remember in, at those times to, it's fine to debate things um, and be passionate about those things for sure. But drawing that line between being passionate about something and losing civility and the decorum. And so, uh, it's important as part of that process, honor the role of the chair. That's what the chair is supposed to do in the meeting is make sure as those things start to happen or as things get contentious, the chair could say, hey, guys, let's dial this down a little bit. If that happens, don't get upset. So council member, I'm not gonna call anybody out specifically. I, I don't, I was just gonna use some examples, like, so let's say, uh, council member, you're like, you're, you're, you're just getting real passionate. And the chair is like, hey, let's just dial this down a bit. Don't like, take that as an affront, like, oh, you telling me to dial it down? You know, that's just gonna, that's his MO. Sorry about that, man. But, uh, avoiding personal attacks, that's a, that's a critical thing, too. There's a difference between, I had a situation in a, see, here I go with a war story. There it goes. A situation in a council meeting where there was, there was serious question about something that one of the council members had done, um, that, that clearly the council felt like was in direct, um, opposition to what the, what the municipality was trying to do as a whole. And, and, and a course of action that the council had supported. And this person went and did that. So was it okay to discuss it? Absolutely. Was it okay to even say, hey, this, this shouldn't have happened? Absolutely. Where, so where's the line drawn on like a, a personal attack? Well, a personal attack would be something like, you know, you, you're an idiot for doing this. I can't believe you, I mean, using language that's inflammatory as opposed to simply, hey, vice mayor, when you did this, I feel like it was completely contrary to the direction that we had decided as a council. And I think that's in, it's a har- it's harmful to the municipality. So I think that we need to talk about how to address those things going forward. That's a professional way to talk about the same situation without making it personal. Um, and as part of that, you're demonstrating effective problem solving approaches. And you're doing that also for the benefit of the public. They, they wanna see that you as a body can actually solve problems constructively and not just call each other names. Okay? Um, so continuing conduct with one another, that's public meetings. Now, in private encounters, so now you're not in a public meeting, you're somewhere else. Again, of course, continue respectful communication. I've sometimes seen the after meetings where, you know, they're going to the parking lot and a couple of them start, you know, chirping at each other. And, uh, you gotta remember that, okay, yeah, you're not in the public meeting anymore. That doesn't mean it's like, okay, now that we're not in the public meeting, you know, you know, Maria, you piece of crap. I can't believe what you did. No, you can't do that. If you do that, even in a private setting, guess who's still watching? And guess what's still gonna come up? And, and so it's, it's important that just because you're now outside of the public view in a public meeting, that that civility, respectful communication, that, again, that doesn't mean that you can't go up to, to, like that, hey, you know, like what we were just talking about, I was really concerned about how that went. I, I don't think you should have done that. I wish you would have this, this, this. You can still have those conversations without, um, and, and being respectful. Now, we'll talk about open meeting law in a little bit, just for some things. Of course, you don't wanna have the after meeting and then have two or three of you and then four of you get together, start talking about it, cause now you got an open meeting law issue. But if it's just a couple of you, that's, that's understandable. But again, uh, continuing, uh, that, that, that respectful communication. Be aware of the lack of security of written notes. Was it something I said, Louise? He was so mad that I called him out and he's like, I'm out of here. No, it's fine. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I know you can still hear me and I know you wanna hear everything I have to say. That's right. There we go. So, um, the lack of security of written notes, voicemail messages and email. Um, I wanna give you a quick example. I, once upon a time, I actually, I, I served in elected office myself, it's a long time ago. And there was a state, I, I heard, uh, a voice message from a state senator to a state representative. Um, that, again, that wasn't, it wasn't me, but I heard the message because the state rep saved the message. The state senator was just blowing her up. Like it was vile, the things that he was saying. It's like, I can't believe this guy's recording this on a voicemail. And guess what happened? That thing got sent, I think maybe to the New Times or something. I mean, like there was, all of a sudden now, there was this voicemail out there of him just berating her. He looked, sounded terrible. So, um, even though he thought it was a private encounter, he left this voicemail. That's, that's not appropriate. And it's, and it's definitely not necessarily gonna be protected and not gonna show up somewhere. So in your code of conduct, it actually asks this very question. I think it's a good question. How would you feel if this voicemail message were played on a speakerphone in a full office? So you think about that with the voice messages you leave, with the text messages you send, with the emails you send, anything like that. So in private account, encounters with one another, still that respectful, um, stuff. Even private conversations have a public presence. That's, that's, this is, this is language from your, uh, code of conduct, again. You are always on display. I have some, I've had lots of, I've worked with, I bet you, again, in the last twenty plus years, I've probably worked with two hundred plus council members, mayors around the state and things. And it's amazing, a lot of times people think it's like, well, I'm gonna go to this other thing and I'm gonna speak, and I'm gonna speak as a citizen. You know, I'm not, I, I'm a citizen in my community, I'm not gonna speak as a council member. And I'm like, guess what? Nobody sees you that way. You're a council member and you might say, well, I'm here in a different, I'm here just as a resident. Good luck with that. That's, you're, you've been elected, that's, this is how you're viewed. You're viewed as a, as a member of the body and as council. So you are always on display. Um, you signed up for that, so I don't feel bad for you. Um, but understand it's important to, to maintain that. So this is, again, conduct with one another, conduct with one another. How about council conduct with city staff, another critically important thing? In fact, it's really important for you guys to be nice to each other and to work cordially with one another. But ultimately, again, in my experience, if councils aren't functioning well and they're not working together, oh, okay. That's a, you know, that'll happen sometimes. If it bleeds over into staff, that's a real problem. Like that, that's where the whole functioning of the organization just goes, just has a real serious problem. So let's, this area, I hope you'll pay really close attention. This is important. Treat all staff as professionals. And you might have, there might be a staff member that you think is like, this person is as incompetent a person as I have ever met with, dealt with in my life. That is not something you should ever out, out in the open talk about. And that's, that's another slide, it's another part of it later. But if you have a concern about a, about a member of staff that you just think is not, like this person, wow, what in the world are they doing? There is one person that you should talk to about that, and it's the city manager. You should simply go, hey, hey, this is what I'm, I'm learning about this, this thing, maybe you wanna look into it. And then you're done with it, by the way. You leave it from there. You're not gonna follow up, you're not gonna be like, hey, what's going on with this thing? Because guess what? Now you're starting to look like an administrator instead of a policymaker. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those things, too. So treat all staff as professionals. Um, limit your contact to specific city staff. This is what I was just telling you. You're the city manager, in fact, I would say, and there's your, uh, your personnel policy that's applicable here. There's a resolution, uh, city code, uh, council manager section, uh, two fifteen, two hundred B. And then you've got A R S, which also talks about, you know, the, um, the city manager, uh, council manager form of government. And it is really important that when in doubt, I think I have that here somewhere, yes, there, city manager. When in doubt, just go to the city manager. There are multiple reasons for this that is both for the good of the municipality, but also for your own personal protection. It allows you to have an immunity when you're acting as a council member and not as an administrator. So further on, uh, council conduct with city staff, don't disrupt staff from their jobs. You might think, by the way, hey, I'm just gonna go ask this person a quick question, it's no big deal. Um, once again, I'll go back to what we were talking about a few minutes ago. You're always viewed as a council member or mayor or vice mayor. You might think, oh, well, I know these people, you know, that were cool. They're still gonna, they're gonna view you as a council member. And, and in that setting, it creates confusion. If they're getting direction from a council member or, or requests from a council member, it creates confusion as to their chain of command, cause they're gonna think they, they need to be responsive there. And, and that, so that's something that, that can be problematic if you're disrupting city staff. Even if you think it's just for a few minutes, I would first, again, go to the city manager, say, hey, I just have a quick couple of questions. In fact, by the way, if you do that, most of the time, my experience is, if you say, hey, I've just got a few questions on this thing, I wanna get some information on it. You go to the city manager, say, hey, here's what I wanted to talk about. City manager might say, hey, well, let's bring in director so and so for a few minutes, or let's do this. So it's not like you're not gonna get to talk to those people, it's just do it through the manager and then you're protected. Uh, don't ever publicly criticize, uh, an individual employee. Again, we kinda talked about that already. Don't get involved in administrative functions. Remember what I just was telling you, legislative immunity is your friend. You wanna have that. Um, don't attend meetings with staff unless you're specifically invited. So don't just show up to stuff. Now, there may be, manager may, may call meetings, may say, hey, like I just said, hey, let's bring in director so and so. Or, you know, deputy director so and so, or supervisor so and so, or whatever. Hey, let's have a meeting. That's different. Now you're there, we're, we're gonna call that. But don't just show up, like there's a staff meeting or something else going on and you show up, hey, just wanted to find out what's going on here. That's gonna disrupt them in there. And, and it's, again, it's gonna look like you're acting like an administrator as opposed to a policymaker. And limit requests for staff, uh, support. Um, I seriously just had a case for a, another Arizona municipality case. A demand from a lawyer on behalf of a council member concerned about staff that was, was pulled away and all of this sort of stuff. I mean, like, this is, I, I put that up there as an example because it's not just theoretical. When I say, you know, limit your request for staff support, it actually, when those things are happening, it's, it can create problems. And again, to the tune of a, of a lawyer sending a letter, which then I had to send a letter back and say, you know, sorry, there's no issue here. So hopefully that's the end of it, but, um. And then, of course, this should go without saying, but it's in your code of conduct, don't solicit political support from staff. Okay, that's staff. Council conduct with the public. How about public meetings? Be welcoming, of course. And there may be people in, in, that show up to a public meeting, you might look out there and you might like, oh, man, that guy again. Um, still be welcoming. This is the place for, for the public to be able to come and see how their government is operating and working. Be fair and equitable, be an active listener. These aren't, by the way, if you think these are just my slides, no, this is your code of conduct. This is actually, this is the language from your code of conduct, be an active listener. So, um, if you, it's of course fine, you don't wanna take some notes or things or, or look at something. Um, but if you are, if you're sitting there the whole time, somebody's talking on an item, whether, whether it's called to the public or whether it's a, you know, an open, or a, a, a public hearing item, and they're talking about a, you know, a rezone or whatever it might be that they're, they're talking about. If you're, if you're sitting there like this, if you're like this the whole time, it's gonna, it's like you are completely disinterested and you don't, you don't care about their, their issue. Now, you very well may not care about their issue, but don't show that. You wanna, again, this is about, the, the council code of conduct is, is professionalism. And that doesn't, professionalism doesn't mean you have to agree with people, like people. It just means that you're professional in a setting like this for, for the office that you've been asked to, to, uh, to uphold. So again, be an active listener in what's going on, hear people out. You actually might be surprised, somebody might tell you something you hadn't thought about before and you go, huh. So it's, it's an important thing. As for clarification, you certainly, if somebody says something and you're not clear what they're talking about, you could ask for clarification. Be careful not to let that cross over into debate with a member of the public. Uh, you guys can debate things when you're, when the question is called, all the things that, that you were just told in that, in the last meeting. And you guys could debate stuff all you want with each other, but don't do it with a member of the public. Don't, if somebody's up here speaking about why you shouldn't, uh, approve a particular, you know, rezone for a piece of property or something, um, don't start debating the member of the public as well. Have you thought about this citizen so and so? Have you thought, you know, I mean, that's just not appropriate to debate the public with it, okay? And of course, no personal attacks ever on a member of the public. Unofficial settings, so there's, there's a public meeting, how about unofficial settings? No promises on behalf of the council. Don't talk to the public in some event or whatever and say, hey, yeah, yeah, don't you worry about that. Council's gonna take care of that. Don't ever speak on behalf of the council that way. No personal comments about other council members either in settings like that. You're at some event and it's like, yeah, well, you know, council member, uh, Vargas, and phew, man, let me tell you about what's going on there. No, none of that sort of stuff is appropriate. It's against your code of conduct. And, and it's, it's helpful when you abide by that to be able to have a working relationship with one another. Remember, this is in your code, quote, remember, San Luis is a small city. What's your population now? It's pretty good, thirty, forty?
About thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand.
See, I was, I was close, I was close. Um, it may not feel so small anymore. I mean, it still is, though, you know, like I said, when I grew up here a long time ago, um, you know, I think Yuma's population was like fifty or something like that. It's funny now, even still, if, I'll, I'll run into somebody who's, oh, you're from Yuma, do you know this family? Nine times out of ten, I do, and I've been gone for so long. So, yeah, it's, it really is, it's a small city. So these sorts of things will, will come back to bite you in the butt if you're not being cautious about that conduct with the public and, and unofficial settings as well. So other public agencies, you just have to make sure, if you're talking to some other public agency and, um, you're speaking, you, you're, only the mayor is the, uh, is the, is the official spokesperson for, for the city that way. So you gotta clarify your role, you gotta make sure, you know, hey, if you're talking to some other agency, are you speaking as a, as a representative of the city? Cause sometimes you are, I mean, sometimes the mayor might say, hey, you please go and do this. Or you might be a member of a, you know, like, uh, a committee. I'm trying to think of the different, you know, like a transportation committee or something like that of a multi, multi jurisdictional sort of a thing. But if you're, if, if you're just working with some public agency, truly on a personal matter, this is different than, like I said, representing yourself that way. If you're there for something, for, for, you're, you're a business person and you're working with some agency on something, you say, hey, you know, I'm, I'm here purely in, in my role as a, as a business person for my business. I'm not here as a, as a council member, this has nothing to do with the city itself. So, and then again, correspondence, similarly, you'd never wanna use city letterhead for something like that unless it is approved, because you are in fact representing the city in a certain thing. So boards and commissions, you know, like, you know, planning and zoning boards, those sorts of things. If you're gonna attend a commission meeting, be careful to only express personal opinions. That's in your board and that's in your code of conduct, okay? I put the parentheses there, that's editor's note is me. Maybe don't. Maybe, maybe just don't. Maybe either, if you're gonna go, cause you're just saying you wanna watch, don't speak. I have seen that really go bad, where a member of the council comes to like a planning and zoning or something else and they actually get up and speak and they're speaking about something. Well, guess what? Now how in the world is that gonna come to you later? You're gonna get a chance to view it, you're gonna get a chance to talk about it. Wait till then to do it. It could, it could look really bad on you if you're at these count, at these commission meetings, uh, almost looking like you're trying to sway a commission and how to go when it's gonna come to you anyway. So again, limit contact. Um, the boards serve the community, they don't serve council members. They make recommendations to the council, but they're not your, they're not, they're not like working for you, okay? Be respectful, again, diverse opinions. And, uh, keep political support away from, from those sorts of situations, too. And that's on, that's on both ends of it. You don't want, uh, board members and others to, to confuse those things. So, uh, we're getting toward the end of the count, of the code of conduct stuff. Uh, council conduct with the media, gotta love this one, right? Don't ever go off the record and no true such thing. So don't go off the record like, hey, I'll talk to you about this, but you can't say it was me. Uh, the mayor, again, is the official spokesperson for, uh, those things. Choose your words carefully. Um, here's a key takeaway for, in my view, it just comes down to two things. Don't be a jerk and stay in your lane. That's your code of conduct. I had questions at the end, cause we're gonna cover two quick little things. How are we doing on time? I think we're doing all right, right? Did I, did I do that? Not too bad, not too bad. Um, questions on code of conduct.
Okay, so say one of us, say, okay, I'm a coun-
say, okay, I'm a council member right now, but outside I'm not a council member. I'm taking off that hat. How do you go about that as a conduct within the community and letting people know, no, no, I'm business first and then I'm not elected official?
Now, what do you mean by taking off that hat? Like you?
I'm a, obviously we're all elected officials twenty-four seven, but saying, okay, I'm not an elected official right now. I'm per se, like my profession, I'm just a realtor. How in contact, contact wise, is that okay or is that bad?
You're still, you're still a member of the council. There's no, there's no real way to take that hat off. You guys are kind of funny. I'm trying to, I'm trying to read your faces here.
General question because I've heard that.
Yeah, no, I, that was why I, I kind of brought that up too, where it's like you want to say, oh, I'm here to speak as a citizen. I'm here. It's like, yeah. That's, that's not how people are gonna view it regardless.
Council member Cruz?
I recommend you do see, wa, watch our YouTube channel, please. You're gonna know why we're laughing.
Point me to a meeting and I'll, I'll, I'll watch it. Maybe that's why I'm here, right?
You mentioned about political support from staff, right? Not to seek it, which I know. But what if they come to you, there's unions, there's groups. Can you explain that one?
Oh, sure. Yeah, you couldn't, you can certainly accept support. Like you, if you, the, the issue is you going and soliciting support in your, in your position as a council member. But those, those groups and people and citizens and staff members, they, they have a First Amendment right to support whoever the heck they want to support as well. With certain restrictions that exist that doesn't matter for this discussion right now. It's called a little hatch act. Again, doesn't matter. But that, the, it, it changes when as in your capacity as a council member, you are seeking support from staff directly. Hey, you know, I'd like to have your support for my reelection. That, that is a, that's an area that I would say you gotta avoid.
And a hypothetical.
Okay.
If you have someone that worked here for over twenty years and you create friendships with staff, have baptized a couple of their kids. And I know that the best advice is to stay in your lane. Don't be a jerk or don't be a jerk, stay in your lane. And how you do, where do you draw the line on that one or where legally?
In terms of just like friendships?
Friendships and, I mean, conversations about our work or former work and we're now policymakers.
Sure. No, it's, I, again, I think that the key is, so you have relationships with people in this hypothetical situation, you know, a former administrator for whatever, something like that. The, uh, the, the key is, you know, again, and it's a small community too. So I mean, and by the way, small community, I mean, thirty-eight thousand, I mean, there's, I've worked with communities of two thousand people. You want to talk about everyone knowing everyone? So does that mean, oh my gosh, I'm a member of the council. I gotta stay away. No, I mean, there's still constituencies and others. It's just about, I think the key is staying in your lane where in those discussions, if things start coming, friends and they happen to be also staff members, if, if one of those people's like, hey, you know, you know, today I want to talk to you about, you know, something that happened at work the other day. That's where it's like, woo. And you just, you have to be able to say, hey, I would love to. We're buddies and stuff. It's like, you, you gotta take that to your supervisor, your manager. And by the way, blame me. Say, hey, man, the lawyer came, Justin said, I can't talk about this. I gotta send you to the manager. Because if I don't, you know, oh, man, I get in big trouble. So just put it on others because that's the truth. It really is. You want to keep, I had a, and here goes another war story. I had a lawsuit for a, a rural, a northern Arizona municipality where a council member, get this, this was all the council member did. Employee shows up at the council member's house because they know each other. They're a small community. And, and employee says, hey, I've been having some real issues. Can I just talk to you? I just need someone to talk to. And guess what? The council member just trying to be a nice friend. I mean, of course you, you'd be like, sure. So they sit out on the porch. They talk for like thirty minutes. A year-ish later, that employee brings a lawsuit against the municipality. Now, in this case, fortunately, the employee didn't name that council member individually because they were friends. But that guy was making allegations of that conversation and saying that the council member said things that the council member later was like, I didn't say any of those things. That is simply not true. But of course he had to say that those things were said as a way to try to support the claim. So guess what? Council member ends up in a deposition for hours being grilled and asked about this conversation and other stuff. I mean, which by that point was like two years earlier, she's trying to remember all the details. The way to stay, the, the way to avoid that entirely is that if, if an employee comes and, and maybe they're a friend and they're somebody that like, hey, I've just been having a real tough time with some folks at work and I just don't have, feel like I have anybody to talk to. Council member Cruz, you're, or maybe it's a friend, Maria, I just don't have anyone to talk to. Would you please just hear me out? As much as you want, you, you would say, I would love to, I, hey, I care about you. The, the, the best way for you to handle this is through your chain of command. Well, I don't trust my chain of command. Well, go to the city manager. I don't trust the, the city manager. Well, go to an outside, do something. You, don't let it be you. Hopefully that answers that.
Yeah, just because I, yeah. That answers my question. Anyone else have any questions?
Regarding personal attacks, when is, again, we're not supposed to be talking ill about each other.
Right.
But when is it bad? And again, for all of us to include things in a personal way during a meeting.
So during a meeting, again, ma, making it personal is never okay. If somebody ever, like so, Councilor Rosales, let's say something's being discussed and then you start getting attacked personally, like you feel like you're getting attacked personally. Under your code of conduct, you're, you're allowed to call for a point of personal privilege and that's what you would do. Now, I will tell you guys, be judicious about that sort of thing. I have been in two council meetings in the last year under a similar code of conduct. And one council member's talking and one council member starts feeling like it's getting personal and council member says, point of personal privilege. And, and the person, the council member keeps talking, the mayor's like, okay, wait, hold on. I want to call the point of personal. This was offensive, this, this, and the person starts going again. Well, this is, no, I wasn't saying that. The point of personal privilege again. And it became this just circus. It really, I was sitting there like with popcorn, just like, oh, man, this is. But it was, but truly though, guys, it was embarrassing. I mean, it, it really was embarrassing. For like the public that was there, I was just thinking, oh my gosh, people, they just must be thinking that they've elected a bunch of junior high kids to, to do this. So yes, there's a place for that and it's in your code. So if something like that's happening, you'd say, hey, and just call on the chair or, you know, hey, point of personal privilege. And then just wait, you know, then you should be given the opportunity, your code of conduct says to make sure you, you, you're specific as to what was said because you don't want to get into this general argument over something being personal when something, it's like you gotta, you gotta be able to point to specific words and things that are being said that truly are personal again versus legitimate, uh, legitimate debate and issues that you guys should be able to discuss openly and people not get their feelings hurt on, on everything. You know, it's like, just because someone disagreed with you doesn't mean, hey, that offends me that you disagreed with me. Point of personal privilege. No, it's personal attacks. Cool?
I just have a question. Are you talking about us? Because all your examples have you been nailing it on.
I am, I, I, I on my honor, on every, I absolutely promise, no. Like I told you, if this helps you feel better, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But again, like I said, we, we represent so many Arizona municipalities. I have seen so much of this sort of stuff. And so it is aspirational. This is where you want to be. It's not to say, if these things are happening or if you've had some of these things, don't think like, oh my gosh, we are a disaster. We're the laughing stock. You're not like this, this stuff happens, but it isn't, no.
I'm getting emojis via messages like popcorn and laughing and, and like all these messages.
Well, again, you're in good company with some others, but that doesn't mean actually bad company with some others. But it is a, maybe it's a good way to say, hey, may, maybe let's change this narrative. We can still debate the heck out of these things and, and talk about what's really important and make sure we're talking about those things in detail without it becoming a, a show, so to say.
Another question. When one of us want to take a picture with one another and it's in public, right? Bite the bullet and still take the picture, correct? Or just don't?
Oh, like if it's for some ceremonial sort of a thing?
Correct.
Oh, I would say so. I mean, yeah, but I mean, again, that's not, I wouldn't, if, look, if you're like, like, I'm not gonna be a part of this picture, that's fine. That's not like violating any sort of code of conduct where it's like, oh, no, you had, you had to get into that picture. I don't think that that would, that would fall into that, but. So.
So I have a question. What happens if all these violations continue to happen and happen meeting after meeting? Do we sue one another? Like what do we, how do we fix this? How do we get order?
Well, just so happens, your code of.
Our code of conduct says that we should file a complaint to the city manager and the city attorney.
Right.
Conduct their an outside person to do an investigation. But they come and they do an investigation and where does that lead? To censure?
So great, great question. And it is, the reason it's a great question is you really don't have a lot, as a general law city, a lot of ability to do much other than bring it to the public's attention. You can't remove a member of the council. You're not a charter city that allows for those sorts of things. So, but, and, and you have to decide, you know, is this something that, I had recently another council on it, on an issue of the code of conduct determine that they were going to remove a council member from a particular committee assignment where, which was a fairly prestigious regional assignment. And they said, you know what, until, until we are comfortable that you're gonna, you know, play nice in the sandbox with all of us, we're going to remove this committee assignment. And the council member was furious about it. But so there are things that can be done in terms of like sanctions if, if those things are, are happening. By the way, you don't actually have to have a, a, like a, a finding of something before you do. The council can always act as a majority to, to do something like that. If there's, if the, if there's evidence that something is happening and a council member's, or two council members like, I want this on an agenda. I want us to discuss this stuff that's going on and that this, this has to, this has to change. But yes, your code of conduct has a process and the sanctions, but they are very much, I would say, without teeth from the standpoint of like legal ability to do something about it other than raise awareness to it.
So then we, we go spend, I don't know how much money Kay spends on an investigation, hiring an outside attorney to come in, do a biased free investigation and then we publish that to the news. So they, they know or like, I mean, what's the purpose of spending that money? We know that the person is in violation of multiple things from our code, our code of conduct. I mean, that code of conduct that you have that you're referencing, I, I asked to be introduced and to be part of our code back in December of twenty twenty-two. So I mean, I, I know the code of conduct. So it, it's, it's, I was something Kay and Glenn worked with and I had input on it before it was presented to the council. But in reality, what's the purpose of filing a complaint when nothing can be done?
It's, it, well, the purpose of filing the complaint would, would be to, I don't want to say necessarily just to make a record, but to show that you are, you're being fair in, in how this is, that it's not just political. Cause sometimes that's how it'll be viewed. It's like, oh, well, this is just political. It's like, no, this is, these are the things that are happening. And if, and if there are some, if this is reviewed and found to be the case, then let's do something about it. Can we remove somebody from the council? No. But can we, can we restrict their, their ability to attend a conference? Because we're gonna say, hey, we're not, you're not, we're not gonna pay for that, for you to go to that conference. You can do that. We're gonna remove them from a committee assignment. You can do that. You can public censure. What value does it have? It truly just depends. I've seen where it has value in some municipalities. There was one particular municipality where I advised as a practical matter. I said, you know, on this issue, if you censure the person, it's probably, they're probably just gonna be viewed as a martyr. So you have to really decide. Does it, does it, does it help fix the behavior? Or does it just empower something else? And those are just policy decisions for you guys to have to make. And I know it's, I wish I had a better answer for you on like, no, it actually does this or that, but it, it is truly mostly aspirational and for the public to be aware of, of what's going on.
Thank you.
I mean sadly, yeah.
Okay. But you can control yourself. That's the one, that's the one person you can control, right? So stay in your lane and don't be a jerk. We actually have at our law firm, we have a, a no jerk rule. And the difference is we're not, nobody's being elected into my law firm, so we can control that. But we, when, whenever somebody comes into the firm, we always sit down and say, hey, listen, understand our firm has a no jerk rule. We don't, we don't have, I don't, you're the smartest lawyer on the earth. If you're a jerk, there's not a place here for you. So, but I understand you're in a, you're in a elected official setting. You can't always control all that, but you can control yourself. So let's talk, yeah, go ahead.
Other question. So perfect example is last, last month that we had a regular meeting. They were attacking two of my colleagues here. I, I did a point of order. And the chairperson said that I am not allowed to speak over the chair because the chair was speaking. And I said, I'm not speaking over you. I'm doing a point of order. And then the chair said, I'm speaking Councilmember Cordera. And then I said, I understand and I don't want to like interrupt you basically, but it's a point of order. You have to listen to it. Well, there was a recess called. She banged the gavel, said, we're going on a five-minute recess and walked away. She didn't have consensus from the body to do a recess. So basically we know that if I file a complaint, she's gonna be found that she was in violation of several Robert rules of order. Code or, or, or simply our, our city code. So I kind of know where this is going and, and I kind of have a feeling of that I can answer my own question, but council has the authority. The majority of the council has the authority. Can we remove that the mayor is not the presiding chair of a meeting? Can we remove that power from her?
That would have to be a code. I'm guessing this, I haven't even looked at this, but I would imagine the answer is no, but you're, I, I bet your code says that the mayor is the person. So I suppose you could change your code to make somebody else, but that would be, I'd have to look at state law though, to see if there's like, if the mayor is the de facto and, because sometimes we have in code, things that are just mirroring the state law. And that's what I, I, I would, we would want to look at before I answer definitively, but my gut tells me the answer's probably no. Because that's the point of, of, of the mayor's office. In a, in a, so in a general law city where the mayor is direct elected from the constituency, there are some municipalities, and this is something that, that you could certainly pursue. It would, I believe this would actually take a vote of the, of the people to change. But some municipalities, for example, they are, their, their council is elected and then the council elects the mayor.
Welton does that. Welton does it. I know here in Yuma.
Yeah, I know several municipalities that do it. Some that work really well, others that don't. So I mean, it's, it's just a policy issue. And like I said, I do think that would actually require a vote of the people.
The reason I ask is because clearly this person doesn't follow Robert rules and clearly this person does not make the effort to learn about Robert's rules. That's why they're not sitting on this dais today. And they were not sitting on this dais two months ago when the first session happened. So I'm thinking like, if they're not willing to commit to professional development and learn and, and apply Robert rules and follow the code, then maybe as a majority, we should strip that person from being our chair.
I think like Justin said, it's like, it wouldn't be able to be done, right? To change who's the spokesperson. But again, I think going back to what they just told us less than an hour ago, and Robert's rules is that if she's out of order or whoever's out of order, then vice mayor jumps in. So that's where there's that safeguard on the second person. So vice mayor knows for next time, jump in and say something.
There, there are paths.
So then it becomes a fight over the vice mayor with the mayor saying, you're out of order. And then she says, no, and then I mean, you know where I'm going with this?
I do.
The majority would decide.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what Robert's rule said. The majority would decide if the point of order is not acknowledged or voted on.
And by the way, I'm happy to, you know, as you guys know, I think I, I mean, I, I'm available for any follow-ups as well. I don't like, I don't want to take up your whole, your whole evening. But did want to cover just a couple of brief things on open meeting law. Just because this, again, these are always good reminders. I've been, this is probably my, geez, tenth open meeting law training in the last six months between councils and also some school boards and, and others actually for, you know, for the, for another group. So the open meeting law is, is, as you know, really important to. So, the open meeting law is, is, as you know, really important to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on. Um, why should you care? For a number of reasons. You've got this, uh, this, I'm not gonna go through it. I mean, there's penalties associated with violating the open meeting law. So when, what would be, what's important as a reminder for you as it pertains to the open meeting law? Cause I know you've all reviewed it, you're required to, before you even take office, there's, there's things that you have to do. But, understanding that the open meeting law applies when you're part of a public body, okay, you are, so this is a public body. And when the public body is in a meeting. So I wanted to just cover briefly this issue of meeting. Uh, because it's changed over the years. That's how it once was. You know what? The founding of the country, you know, people in a meeting together, all together. And now, it can be at a whole host of other places, including virtually. And so, how can a meeting happen? It does not even, it doesn't have to be a formal meeting. You might, you might be in a meeting and not even realize it because you're, you're in a forum where messages are being sent. So, for open meeting law purposes, a meeting can happen in person, virtually, via email, via text, social media message, telephone conversation. This is another reason why it's important that, for example, you know, if you're, well, let's talk about a couple of different ways this can come up, cause I've seen this happen where, you know, emails are being sent between council members, and then all of a sudden, four find their way onto something, and it's on a matter that's being discussed, uh, that, that could come before the body, and now you've got an open meeting law violation, even though maybe only two of you thought you were, you were emailing each other. Similarly, I've seen this happen where, you know, council members are texting each other, either outside or inside of a meeting. My suggestion is n- to not, especially not during meetings, to not, to not be texting each other. If so, if the public believes that that's happening, they say, hey, wait, they're, they're deliberating behind the scenes. Now they're gonna try to get, get that information. And so I would say, you know, avoiding those sorts of perceptions. Um, so texts, telephone calls of course, or Zoom meetings and other things like that. All of those can ultimately create an open meeting law violation if matters are being discussed in those forums, one way or the other, in email, text, whatever, and a majority are on them, and it's not in an open meeting agendized for discussion, so.
Say we're not talk, no, I'm not saying we do this, right?
Right, hypothetical.
Hypothetically.
Right. I love hypotheticals.
But what if one council member's texting another one just to see if one's okay? Just to see, hey, how, how, like, how did your child do? You know, something like that, just to follow up, nothing that regards to city business.
Yeah. No, that's totally fine.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, my, my, what I'm getting at is, well, but like, for example, dur-, a lot of times during meetings, if, if a, if council, if you, like, if you were sending that message to, you know, Councilmember Vargas, like during, during the meeting, like, hey, how, whatever happened with that? How did, how did the game go with your kid last night? Or, is that anything that has to do with the body? Of course not. But again, if, if, if this is going on behind the scenes like this, public is gonna be like, what's, what's being talked about?
Well, you mean, yeah, more during a meeting, but I mean, in general, just like, hey, how's your kid doing? How's his first day of school? Type of stuff, just friendly interactions, okay.
Yeah, it's.
One question, what, what would you do if you, um, see that one of the elected official is actually texting with someone in the public, telling him what to ask or what to say in a call to the public?
Hypothetically, yeah. Um, there's nothing that would vi-, there's nothing that violates the law in that, um.
Mostly if that person is abstaining for that particularly.
Well, if they're abstaining for something for conflict purposes, that's, well, and, and I have some conflict slides to talk about real quick. That's a very different situation, because if there's a conflict, if somebody's abstaining because of a conflict, they're not supposed to participate in any way in the discussion, whether, so, even if they're like, hey, I'm not gonna vote on this, but if they're doing anything, there's, they're supposed to be a way. Now, we'll talk about conflict here in a minute, because sometimes, especially bodies like this, there are things that look like conflicts that are not legal conflicts. They're perceptive conflicts, and that's, sometimes it makes sense to abstain from a perceptive conflict, but it may not actually be a true legal conflict. And if it's not a true legal conflict, and if a person, if a member is abstaining just, you know, for la-, you know, because they're like, well, I just don't want it to look bad, and they do those things, they're not actually violating the law, cause it's not a conflict, but it's really bad for them.
Mo-, mostly if that person is worried about perception, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Know that, absolutely. And per-, and perception matters on those things. I mean, it, it does.
Going back to the, how's your kid going? And, and he has a newborn, Councilmember Rosales. And I always tell my colleagues, hey, I respect the open meeting law a lot, you know, let's make sure. What if, let's say, people are talking in the background, two, three, and you're that fourth, fifth person? And you don't know, when, as long as you disclose, hey, I respect the open meeting law, have you talked to others? And they say no. You know what I mean? Like, sometimes, cause I might send him a message.
Sure.
And, cause I know he's gonna relay it to you, or whatever.
Sure.
Can you?
Yeah, an open meeting law violation can occur even unintentionally. So, it's, now, that, that doesn't mean, AG's office usually in those situations says, hey, be careful of these things, get some training. But, that doesn't mean you can't communicate with each other. It just means that if, for example, if you two are, are communicating, text or email or in person, whatever, if you're communicating on an issue, and, and you know he's gonna go talk to one other, I would just, you know, make it clear, say, hey, just remember, only, you know, Councilmember Cruz. That's, that's it. We can't go beyond that. If it goes beyond that, it is still an open meeting law violation, but you've done the best you can to, to keep that from, from happening. And that's not, uh, it's hard, because the open meeting law is intended to keep things in the open, but there are certain realities. You should be able to discuss some things to try to understand, um, you know, policy positions and things in order to be informed. So, uh, hopefully that helps a little bit, but, I know. All right, should we talk about conflicts of interest for just a minute? Um, all right, so this is the conflict statute. Uh, prohibits a public official who has, or whose relative has won, a substantial interest in, in, a substantial interest in any interest, I, I think I wrote that wrong. Substantial interest in any contact, contract, sale, purchase, service, or decision before the public body, so substantial interest. There's several little things we're gonna talk about here, when, with, what these little pieces are. And from voting or participating in any way, so we talked about that, part of it. It's, you're not supposed to participate in any way, so it's not, um, you're not sup-, they're not supposed to like try to lobby in any way, um, on the issue. Like, they have to, they have to stay completely out of it in the contract, sale, purchase, service, or in the decision. So, do I have a conflict? Here's kind of a little flow chart for you. Do I have a pecuniary interest? Not just some vague interest, you're, I serve as a member of a, of a, a volunteer on a board or something like that. That's not, um, that's not necessarily a pecuniary interest. Uh, if it's, if the answer is no, no conflict. If there's no pecuniary interest. You have a pecuniary interest if you, or someone fairly closely related to you, and I have some information on that too, stand to gain or lose something of value from the decision. And that something of value isn't just like, again, I, I'm, I volunteer for the Boys and Girls Club, and there's, uh, some, something that's gonna help the Boys and Girls Club. Well, that's great, but I'm not gaining anything by that, other than I happen to be affiliated and I assist, I, I volunteer with them. Now, if I'm the executive director, and I'm, I'm trying to get money that's gonna help support my, my salary, that's a, that's a, that's a pecuniary interest. So, do I have pecuniary interest? No, no conflict. Yes, that doesn't mean there's a conflict. Is my interest remote or substantial? If it's remote, and we'll talk about what that means, no conflict. If it's substantial, then it's conflict. So it has to be a sus-, a substantial pecuniary interest. So, let's get to that, yeah.
Go back to that slide. So, if I'm a donut shop business owner.
A donut shop business owner, okay? This is funny, cause I have a hypothetical I just created.
So, I didn't wanna use a coffee shop, I wanted to use donut.
Did you see my coffee shop example?
I had, I had.
Oh, you got these, oh, okay, here we go. Okay, I was gonna say, man.
That's part of our, our duties. We need to learn what's gonna be presented today.
Be prepared, look at you.
So, um, so I have a donut shop, right? There's three donut shops in San Luis. And, there's a fourth one that wants to come and establish and do business here.
Okay.
Would I have a pecuniary interest in that? Whether I vote in favor or against they coming to our community?
Oh, with them coming into your community? Wow, okay, so here's my, here's my caveat. Conflict, most conflict questions require, I, I never like to say yes, no, like, I would do an analysis of, of that, cause, and that's one of the things that actually you need to do, if, in a situation like that. What you should do is you go to the city attorney and you say, hey, this is happening, there's this fourth donut shop. Am I allowed to vote on this or not? The city attorney will do an analysis, can get an opinion letter to you that can go into the file as to yes or no. That way, if the answer is no, and you can rely on that, and if later some agency comes in, hey, you had a conflict of interest, you could say, I relied on the, the illegal advice of the city attorney on this, and you'll be off the hook. Or the city attorney says, yes, I do think you have a conflict, and here's why, and then you know to pull out. That situation, a, I, I don't, I would have to, I'd have to, it would, there would have to be more facts that I would wanna know. Because, does the vote, does the vote mean you're keeping that, that donut shop out? I don't know that there's a vote that would do that, other than maybe in a particular place. So let's just say, by the way, I'm really speaking off the cuff, I'm, this is like gut. But if that fourth donut shop, if it's a matter of like a zoning for a particular piece, so that that donut shop can go in there, my guess is you would not have a conflict in that, and voting on whether to zone that yes or no, that would allow that donut shop there. Even though, somebody could say, well, you're just voting no on that to the, that zoning, so that that donut shop can't be, can't be there. But the reality is that donut shop could go somewhere else. So it's, you're not keeping them entirely out, just because you're happening to vote on a zoning issue. And I would, like I said though, I, that, there's a caveat there. I could see, we could do, dig into that research and go, well, turns out maybe there is a conflict. But my gut tells me, no, there wouldn't be in a situation like that.
So, eh, didn't have to do a zoning, it just had to be the approval of them, allowing them to construct a business here in San Luis.
But wh- when is there ever gonna be a vote like that?
I have another example.
This is fun.
I'm gonna give you my personal example, because this, this is my daily bread.
I feel like I'm taking the bar exam again. Here we go.
Right here. I, I need, I need an answer, I need an answer.
Okay.
Okay, the mayor and I, okay, the mayor is a developer. She's a number one developer in town. I work for a developer. The mayor is a profit developer. I work for a nonprofit organization. She is the owner of her business, and I'm the employer. I have an executive director, correct? So, employee, employee, excuse me, employee, thank you.
You're an employee, meaning you, you report to an executive director?
Profit organization, but that organization is a developer, right? So, when we have items to discuss that have to do with development fees or infrastructure, things like that, the mayor usually, and I know when it's something that is related to my, uh, organization, I'm totally abstaining, right? I don't even open my mouth, or, because it's related, I guess, because, but right now you said something that triggered me. But my example right now is, she declares conflict of interest, I wanna say ninety percent of the time, and she expects me to declare conflict of interest as well. But I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest, because my questions are general questions for the community. Let's say, they're bringing, um, developer fees, but it's a general question, and I just wanna participate and ask questions, not just because of the developer, because I care about the community and how it's going to impact overall. I'm not thinking about my business, not my business, my employer. So I don't know if, if I make myself clear.
No, yeah, tho-, that does make just, that, that is clear. So, first, in that situation, like I, and this is on, on, on the slides too, like, seek an opinion, a, a formal written opinion that you can rely on, because that will protect you. So you, you get that. In a, in, so you get to a, and you, and something's coming up on an agenda, and it's one of these issues, send it to the city attorney, say, hey, I need to know if I'm okay to, to participate in this, if, if I have a conflict or not. You can, and then you can rely on that. That's what you should rely on.
Okay.
So with that said, I'm happy to give you just my general thoughts, but you are, but I'm telling you, don't rely on this, like, okay, well, Justin said this, so I would get, get that opinion. My gut tells me you do not have a conflict in that situation.
Good. My gut tells me too.
Okay.
So that, that's my argument all the time. And this, this is the, the story behind it, because there, another council member, former council member, worked for this, um, organization as well, and she used to abstain all the time, because everything, anything that had to be rela-, in relation to that. And she did it for so many years, and I think, I mean, it was okay maybe back then, it was comfortable, maybe it was easy to avoid conflict or so. But I'm not that council member, and I always get that answer. But she used to abstain all these years, and she didn't say anything. I said, but that's not me, and I don't feel like I have a conflict.
No, and I'll get your back on this a little bit. One of the reasons why, even in Robert's rules, I mean, abstentions are really discouraged. You were elected by your community to have a voice on things,
Right.
unless you actually do have a conflict. So, I realize that at times it does make sense to, if there is a very strong perception of a, of a conflict, to maybe say, hey, even if there isn't an actual conflict here, I'm gonna stay out of this one. But those should be the exception. Those should be very rare. If it's not a conflict, actual legal conflict, you should participate in, in the discussion. That's what you were elected to do.
Thank you. But I will get the document and papers.
But yes, I mean, again, that, that is, I mean, that's how the statute actually explain, and protects you in those situations, so. And I know that you.
Would that go the same for me as well? Cause I'm a licensed Realtor, and I've always been told.
The rule of ten.
Rule of ten.
Rule ten.
Exactly.
I've got a rule of ten, so you, you know this, cause you saw it. Um, so let's just get real quick, relative, you, you got it, you know who it is, yes?
No, I do, but following up on what she just asked, I'm sharing the meeting right now. Should I have stopped her from continuing on that personal example?
No, okay. No, 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 that's okay, cause like I said, I, the clarity here though, is that what we just talked about was, I mean, truly, it was a good example of how that might come into play. But it also isn't the thing that she can then rely on in the statute to say, hey, I was told I didn't have a conflict. Say, well, no, where's the, where's the formal opinion on that? Once you get that, then that's how, that's what I would go off. And like I said, the city attorney might look at that and go, hey, you know, I know Justin said his gut was this, but here's this new thing over here, whatever. Go with what the, what the, what the analysis is. Like I said, if I, if I wasn't standing here in the middle of the meeting, and I, and you emailed me and was like, hey, here's the situation. I would, you know, like I said, I've got multiple lawyers in my firm. I'd be like, hey, can you guys look at this? Let's do an analysis, and then get you a formal written opinion.
Okay, thank you. You made my day.
That's what, that's what I'm here for.
Councilmember Cruz.
Um, I also have a nonprofit. I'm the president, and if you can go back to that other slide, where the red,
Mm-hmm.
conflict sign, I was put in that spot.
In the red conflict sign?
Pro-, Proverbs thirty-one home. And we clearly stated in another meeting that there is a remote interest. And in the next meeting, it was brought up again. But stating Maria Cecilia Cruz, council member, has a conflict of interest. And it was, another council member's name was mentioned also. And that's how we get so frustrated, because it's been clearly stated, you know, no conflict of interest, but yet it keeps being bring.
If it gets brought up, and you have the, you, you could say, I, I have a written opinion here, form, that analyzed this situation and said, that my interest is remote. Therefore, I do not have a conflict of interest as a matter of law. And you can rely on that, and you can say that, so. Um, relatives, you got it, it's all up there. Um, substantial interest, again, this is that thing I was talking, it does not, it's not, it has to be non-speculative, okay? There's something to gain or lose from it. It doesn't mean an abstract interest, like we were talking about. And that's probably, by the way, council member, the issue of like being involved in a nonprofit, or some of those things, that, that's probably where that, that would have come out, is in not being a substantial interest, but a more, a more abstract interest. That may, somebody may look at and go, well, you're gonna be biased on this because of your involvement with that. Well, that's not the test for conflict. We all have biases toward different projects or things that we want. The question is, is it a bias that's illegal because you stand to gain something from it, okay?
So what is this? How do you prove, like, my donut shop is not gonna lose customers if the new donut shop comes to town?
Um, well, you're, 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 uh, your donut shop almost certainly would, but so would all of the others, and maybe even, so, that, it's not, that's an abstract interest. I mean, certainly, there's, that's why it's, the, the issue is substantial interest. You're almost always gonna be able to show some sort of an interest. So the question though, for you to be, not have to vote, or not be able to vote on something, is, is there a substantial interest? And that's defined in the law, it's not speculative. Yours is speculative in terms of, will you lose business? I would suppose if somebody decides to go to that donut shop instead of yours, but maybe they were going to go somewhere else. So again, that's pretty speculative. And well, what happens if, what happens if, I'll, I'll get us into the rule of ten. What happens if seven more, what if seven donut shops are coming into town? Now you're talking about, now you're over that. So. So I don't, I don't, I think that's the point of the substantial interest and keeping it there as opposed to a remote interest. And that's your next slide, which is, is an interest that may appear to create a conflict, but is not actually a conflict. And I gave you some, several examples in there, like owning stock or other publicly traded investments. You might have that in your retirement account and, you know, and maybe you got Walmart there. And you're like, oh, there's a Walmart that wants to come into town. And so I'm going to vote on that. Well, you don't, you don't have a conflict simply because your retirement account has Walmart stock in it. If that makes sense to you. So the rule of ten, you've probably heard this, but I'll just cover it for you. It's considered a remote interest if you have an interest in a trade business, occupation, profession. This was the, like the Realtor question of a class of persons of at least 10 members. And that your interest is no greater than the others in that group. Here's a practical example, which I, which, and then on the next one, I've got a little, not a donut shop, but a, a coffee shop example. Your economic interest is proportionally shared equally with a group of people. Your interest is deemed remote. So small business owner, council member, you own a coffee shop. City offers a tax rebate, all food service businesses with brick and mortar locations. 10 or more businesses qualify for it. Rule of ten applies. So as long as your interest is no different than others. I did a small tweak to that example to see, to show you how it could come up. So now you own the coffee shop, you're going to, the city's going to enter into a contract to provide service to the city for the, from the coffee shop. And description of services essentially eliminate. So there may be more than 10, but you guys say, hey, the contract's going to say that only coffee shops that have this, this anyways, it's, it's limited to where now it, it reduces it to, to under 10. Well, now the interest, you're, in my example, the council member's coffee shop is, is one of the five that's actually in contention for it. And now you would no longer fall under the rule of ten. The, the interest is no longer remote. It's actual. Because the city's going to enter a contract with one of those shops and now you're one of them. And it's, and there's only five of them. These are things, again, you don't have to, I mean, it's good to know these things generally, but you don't have to be like, okay, Justin, you know, he said this and there's a rule of ten and that. Just know that if, if there's a question like that, you'll know, you'll know, it's like, oh, this involves my business or something I'm going on. Just go to the city attorney, say, here's my situation. Can you give me an opinion as to whether I'm, I'm conflicted out of this or not? Again, if any conflict exists, ask the attorney. Make the interest known in the public record. You can, you can do that a couple of different ways. To me, the easiest way is just at the meeting, say, hey, I've been told, I have an opinion from the city attorney. I do have a conflict in this. As a result, I'm not going to be participating in this. My suggestion when those happens is leave the dais. It's easier to, to then not even look like you're part of the process. You just leave, come back when the item's done. Refrain from participating in any way. File a disclosure again or make the, the, the statement there. Penalties include a lot of bad things. Final questions. I, 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 I feel like I, I wore out my welcome here. I was not supposed to go this long. I feel really bad. But, but you guys had such great hypothetical questions. It was fun.
Thank you. I have.
I have. I'm going to, I, I think I just have one. If you have a personal, not personal, professional relationship with someone borderline on personal, you want for 15, 20 years. And you get asked questions about an item, that, the, the question or the advice being sought borderlines or lies within a personal advice, what would be your answer or what has been your answer to that person?
All right, hold on. Ask that again, because I think I, I don't think I followed that.
So you have this professional slash personal relationship with a policymaker?
Okay.
For 15, 20 years.
Like somebody that's on the council too, or just?
On the council too.
Okay.
And that person asks you a question about an item on the agenda.
Okay.
But such question or such advice borderlines or lies within personal advice?
Okay.
What would you tell that person or what have you told that person?
I don't think there's an, I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't see a legal problem with that.
But if it's personal, you would refer him to a, an attorney, right? Like.
Like if the person's, like personal outside of, like completely outside of the business of the council, a council member's like, hey, man, I, I got this. This personal injury situation that happened. Are you talking about like?
No, an item.
An item that's going to come before the.
That it's personal.
But it affects them personally.
Uh huh.
Oh, my, what I would say is, hey, you need to go to the attorney and get, get an opinion as to whether there's a conflict. I would, I would definitely tell him to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Again, because it protects, it protects the person. Like it really does to have that. It's the point of it. The, the, the law doesn't want to catch you in a gotcha. It, it wants to protect you.
Um, in, in our duties as city officials, are we, um, in our duties, is, is it part of us to advocate for state and local, state and federal government? As an example, like traveling to Phoenix, going to Washington, is that part of, part of our duties?
That's up to you guys as to what, as a, as a matter of, of policy. I know some cities that, that have a, a strong presence, um, and you know, like National League of Cities and other things like that. And they'll go and it's truly just up to you as to determine, you know, for, for your community, you know, is it helpful? Is it, does it, is it not important? That's up to you guys as a whole, as your, it's, that's a policy decision, not a legal one.
Okay.
But does it fall within our scope of office?
It can. I mean, it really just, it truly depends on what you're trying to accomplish. I know I have a city that they, they've had a, a strong presence for a couple of years in DC because they were, they were trying to get some federal funds on a, on an overpass. And, and so they were, they were spending a lot of time trying to do that. And so there, there was an interest that was pretty clear that they were advancing that, that did, and not require necessarily, but it, it was facilitated by them doing that. So it, it just really depends on, on you as a body determining, yes, this is something that is important. We think that it's helpful if a council member or a mayor goes and meets with, you know, the federal representatives in DC on this issue or whatever it might be. But truly the policy decision for you guys to make, not, not really a legal one that, no, they can or can't do it.
Thank you.
Okay, have I said anything here that you think, Justin, you're out of your mind? I disagree completely. I'm going to have to fix everything you just said.
She's going to have a lot of work, that's for sure.
Nothing.
Nothing yet. She's like, oh, she's, she's code of conduct. She's like, I'll, I'll tell them later.
You'll get emails tomorrow.
Right, I'm sure. Well, it's been great to be here with you. Appreciate you taking the time, receiving this training. And certainly, again, like I said, I'm happy to, typically I would say, you know, go, go through your, your city attorney, your manager for whatever. But they, they know how to reach me too.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Um, I would like to highly recommend that this training, both trainings is done every time a new council member, council members, mayor, whatever it is, to be done on a regular basis as new members come in.
I'm, I am happy to come down and get myself some more chili pepper every time.
You gotta try local food. You can't just be going and getting Yuma food.
Okay, I will do that too. I will do that. I, you know, because again, if I was just some rando coming down, that would be one thing. But you know, I mean, I, I grew up in Yuma, like this is my, I didn't have a time to go take a drive down memory lane, but you know.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, everyone. With that, further business, I'm adjourning this meeting at 7:18 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.